Board meeting is called to order. Will you please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Chair Seber.
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth.
Here.
Mrs. Brooks.
Here.
Mrs. Spall.
Here.
Mrs. Bresia.
Here.
Ms. Davity.
Here.
Ms. Ayman.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I want to acknowledge some of our elected officials that are in the audience tonight. Vice Mayor Sefeski, Councilman Tom Osina, Councilwoman Sonia Vazquez Luna, and Councilman Ralph Smith. Thank you for joining us this evening. We're going to pause for a moment of conversation on the side. You're going to do that? Okay. Dr. Newman, are there any additions and deletions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to add, under the discussion agenda, finance and operations, educational support committee recommendation for the new Dean School project.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda this evening?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Vice Chair Stevens, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Are there any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We don't have any superintendents, announcements, or spotlights this evening, so we'll move on to board committee reports, and Vice Chair Stevens has an announcement.
We'll be having a policy committee meeting on March 21st at 4:00 PM at Central Office.
Thank you very much. Moving along to item number 3A on the agenda is citizens' comments. Is there anybody signed up? Okay. Is there anybody that would wish to speak? We have both citizens' comments and the public hearing tonight, but we're first calling for citizens' comments. Seeing and hearing none, I will move on to the public hearing. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about the City of Manassas Public Schools and the FY 2324 School Board proposed budget. Is there anybody that would like to speak to this? Mr. Smith, you were joking about signing up, right? Okay. All right. Okay, just had to make sure. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas accept the consent agenda as modified?
Second. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Williams, that the School Board approve the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Okay, first up on our discussion agenda tonight, we have with us tonight Mr. Bill Downey from Downey &amp; Scott. He'll provide an update on the projected cost for the Jenny Dean, new Jenny Dean School project for our discussion. Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's a pleasure to be here, and old man winter is grasping his last straw, as I hope, tonight. I'm going to see if I can get this presentation pulled up, and I'm going to run right through what we did. We were the city schools' construction manager for the construction of the new Baldwin replacement facility. We utilized those construction documents that were generated in 2015, used for the construction of Baldwin. We performed detailed quantity surveys, we checked with quantities on the documents, and also utilized the contractor's schedule of values from that construction project, as well as taking all of that information and putting it into current market dollars. In doing our analysis, we were tasked to put this into current dollars in 2023, and then escalate it into future dollars for when the project would be delivered. And so what I'm fast-forwarding to is the bottom line in two scenarios. One scenario is a more conservative approach to market escalation, and the second scenario highlighted in blue is a less conservative approach, assuming that the current trend of stabilization in commodity pricing is going to continue, but will also increase in price related to labor costs. So we are looking at a range here of potential market escalations that could occur. And is there any way to blow up the screen in terms of the magnification? Thank you. I didn't want to look at paper, so I'm looking at the screen here. In the scenario at the higher escalation rate, and we're talking about your total project costs, we are advising you that that project at the full buildout of the 150, 52,000 square feet of space that includes approximately 10,000 square feet of classrooms that were not constructed in the original Baldwin, that scenario is, with the higher inflation rate, you are looking at approximately an $80 million project cost, and that is both hard and soft construction costs. And if at all possible, there you go. Thank you. So we are projecting in that scenario of 81.572 million dollars total project cost, and that is the hard construction, the bricks and mortar, as well as the soft costs related to design fees, FF and E, and the other owner-carried typical construction costs that are carried in the soft cost number. In the lower escalation scenario, we are looking at a slightly different picture, but it's not significantly different, but we are looking at approximately a $79.5 million project delivery, and that is, again, both hard construction costs as well as soft construction costs. And the square footage of that facility would be 152,129. It would mirror the original design intent with the additional 10 classrooms that were not constructed at the existing Baldwin replacement facility. I realize it's not good news, and the market in my industry has been incredibly volatile over the past two years, and cost escalations have been rapid and extremely volatile with commodity pricing, specifically electrical and mechanical primary systems gear. And we are actually reflecting the current market in this estimate, and then we are escalating it out in time in those two scenarios. And we're also applying what typically would be a budget for the soft construction costs, which would include all of your design fees, third-party testing and inspections, any legal fees that the school division would have, which would be minor, and other furniture, fixtures, and equipment, the new furnishings that would go into a facility like this. So we looked at the big picture. We've created two scenarios, one with a higher rate of escalation in the future, one with a slightly lower rate of escalation in the future. It used to be, and I've been in this industry for 40 years, but it used to be in times where it's a reasonable rate of inflation, it's closer to the Consumer Price Index, it's a lot easier to predict where these costs will go. In the market that we find ourselves in now, coming off the COVID supply chain breakage and the international manufacturing disruptions and the shipping disruptions, it's truly, I'm sure, bad news for you all that your project has grown in costs such as this. But this is what we believe is a realistic snapshot today, and then projecting out when the project would actually bid with adding those two scenarios of inflation. And again, those are likely to occur. I was reading late this afternoon an advisory that was issued by Skanska, a big international construction and engineering firm, and they're advising their clients that do not expect inflation to drop down to the 2014 level of annual increase of 2.5% to 3% a year. We're just not seeing that in the construction industry. Should that dynamic change, that would be good news for you, but tonight I'm here to tell you, we do not think that that is in the cards for this region, given the state of the market today. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have, talk about. One other piece of information that the staff had asked me to look at was what the likely renovation cost would be to this facility at Jenny Dean where we're currently meeting. And I'll just note that this facility is approximately 90,000 gross square feet. It's a much smaller facility than what we have estimated here with the new facility. It's smaller on the scale of being close to 60,000 square foot difference. So depending upon how you would want to look at that scenario, renovations here, systems replacements, we've given your staff some square footage numbers to use for that, and if the additions were to be added on to bring parity in the programs, say just with the existing Baldwin, we are prepared to provide them some cost support on that as well.
Questions from the board? Mr. Hollingsworth, did you have a question? Okay. Mrs. Spall?
Yes. We've, point of order, let's just, can I just ask? We have now moved our action agenda item up to discussion agenda, so we're now just asking-
It'll be Mr. Downey.
-Mr. Downey questions, and then we will have a chance to-
Yes, ma'am.
-discuss some of this stuff.
Yes.
Mr. Downey, is it fair to say that, is it, is a way to calculate roughly these costs on a per pupil basis? I mean, I know there are a lot of factors that go in, but is one model that you would consider a consistent model to be based on a per pupil cost? I ask that, but I don't want to be cagey. I have a Virginia Department of Education, I'm sure you're, okay, you're shaking your head, so, you know, the most recent building that's been built, and there was a gap, the last one that I have in this area before the 2022, 2023 building was not, was completed, you know, 2019 to 2020, but the per pupil cost for this Loudoun County facility, which we have visited some, I mean, we understand like the rough order of, they're building, like buildings, all over the place, right, in Loudoun County, is a $79,000 per pupil cost. So I'm trying to reason if we were to not want to house 1,000 children, would the amount of the building roughly go down?
Proportionally.
Proportionally.
I would say yes, with a couple of caveats. If you were sizing your building in the core spaces, your cafeteria, your corridors, your gymnasium, to support future additional space-
Yep.
-classrooms and program, the answer is it would tick up slightly.
Right. Okay. And that makes sense. I appreciate that. And if we were to successfully move up our start date, that would also affect the cost.
It would.
And the amounts that I was looking at, just from a novice perspective, was using a 4.5% to 4.6% escalator, so at 8% and 11%, we're talking about a significant amount of money.
We are.
If we bump this up by six months or a year, or is one year really the more conventional way to look at things? You're bonding something out in June or July of each year?
We are projecting a higher rate for this current year that we're in than the 4, 4.5. We're projecting closer to 6.5% for this first year, and that's coming off the heels of close to 18% in 2022 increases. So there's been a cumulative effect in terms of what it's meant to the final product, new school construction. We've worked on almost every single Loudoun County school facility that they've done over the past 20 years, and we track this very closely. I brought some bid results tonight from Prince William County, project that we worked on for Prince William, the Woodbridge Elementary School project. And the numbers that you all are looking at here are, on a square footage basis, very consistent with recent bid activity, as well as a project that we're actually managing that just started construction in the city of Fredericksburg for a new middle school. I realize it's a different program, but we have some fairly accurate market data on that. And so this is, this is the unfortunate message that I'm bringing you tonight, is that the construction costs have just, over the past two years, as a result of COVID and supply chain and labor shortages throughout the nation, has caused, construction costs to climb far in excess of the Consumer Price Index in inflation. So with that being said, I will just mirror your point. Time, and the further out in time that the project is pushed, the higher the rate of escalation, and in this case, you know, it could be significant dollars, over $6 million in inflation costs that would impact your budget, and we are reflecting that in these scenarios.
And so anywhere in this packet, is there an actual value for just the 140,000 square foot building that we actually have in New Baldwin? I understand that, you know, you bid out officially the larger scope, but would that, would that affect this price, you know, proportionally, if we were to bump it down to an exact replica?
Yeah. As an order of magnitude, if you were to construct exactly the building that you have at Baldwin and replace this facility, you'd be talking about the current costs, and I'm referring to current market, of, and I don't want to confuse you between the differences here, between the hard and the soft, but a total project cost, you're probably in the order of $72 million project to replace Baldwin today.
Okay. That helps. Okay, so we are talking, just in actual numbers, between two buildings that we would have on our very own city property, a difference of, you know, 38 million for New Baldwin to roughly 72 million for the exact same building eight years later. That is a fair and accurate statement, to the best of your knowledge.
That's my message tonight, and it's not a good message, I realize that.
Mrs. Spall?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Newman wants to ask for a point of clarification.
The 72 million that you just spoke of, was that, did you say if we were building today, or is that the amount in 2026?
That would be today, and you would escalate that into the future.
Can you clarify that a little bit more? If we're looking at, let's just say, an average 80 million for the 154,000 square feet to be delivered in sometime late, it looks like 2026, early 2027, at this point in time, the difference in dropping those 14,000 square feet is what number?
So your order of magnitude, you're talking about a reduction from the 80 million dollars of approximately $4.5 million?
Okay. So building now is 72, building later is 76?
Roughly.
76?
Roughly.
Okay. Thank you. I guess the only other question I would have is that, I appreciate you bringing what I would consider another option, rough option, for some kind of rehab on this building, but something that's built, a 64-year-old building is definitely not going to come without its surprises in a rehab situation. Is that fair to say?
I think that's absolutely fair to say. We, my firm, performed a facility assessment on this facility in 2018.
Yes.
We identified a 10-year capital improvement plan of replacement of things that were, had already lived their life. I looked at that before I came, just to refresh myself with what it will take, and there were a lot of issues in this building, including hazmat abatement and a lot of concealed conditions. So we would absolutely recommend a much higher owner contingency than we're recommending on a new build for this facility, and it would likely be part of our calculations in whatever we are looking at for renovations and additions here.
Okay. And I'm sorry if I didn't write it down, and you already answered this, but did you put a rough figure on a rehab situation?
We were not originally tasked to do that, but I did today.
Okay.
And we met with Dr. Newman and Andy this morning, and it was after that, and I did. And I haven't had a chance to really talk this through with the superintendent and Andy Hawkins yet, so they're hearing it for the first time.
Do we have your permission?
So if we took and tried to establish some parity in program, and the existing facility here, being limited at 90,000 square feet, suggests to us that you would want to add on, as well as renovate and replace systems here, so order of magnitude, to bring it close to parity with the existing Baldwin program, you're looking at a, approximately a $75 million investment here, and that is also escalated out into the same point of construction as the other cost models.
That answers that?
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Bresia, did you have questions?
Thank you for coming here today. I appreciate that. This is not going to be our only bite at this apple, so just some initial thoughts, just some initial questions here. I would like you to speak, if you wouldn't mind, about what this estimate includes and does not include, because there is a pretty good list of what is not included, and I'm not really clear specifically on, like, furnishings. Yeah, I'm trying to get an idea of what everything is going to cost.
Yeah. The estimates that we prepared, the soft cost estimates do include all the furnishings, all of the IT, the head end, as well as the final devices, the Wi-Fi devices throughout the building, security, access control, the things that normally are carried in owner budgets outside of the bricks and mortar general contract. We are reflecting what we consider to be total project costs. So the big part of it, 75% approximately of the cost of any of this, is the bricks and mortar, the hard construction. The other 25% are the owner typical carried soft costs. Design fees, civil engineering, structural engineering, architectural, mechanical, electrical, all of that, as well as furniture, fixtures, and equipment, IT and IT equipment, and communication systems.
So that's all contemplated in the number we got to think?
And security systems, it is.
But the demolition of the current building is not included?
We weren't really clear about what the intent was with this building, and so thus we did not include the raising and the demolition of this facility. There was discussions still unfolding about the fate of that, and so we did not include it. Based upon the actual square footage and what we know about the facility with the hazmat, the cost to bring this facility down in today's dollars would be approximately about a million eight in that price range.
Okay. I don't know if that's a cheap demolition or an expensive demolition, but it sounds like a lot to me. I mean, I know there's, I know it's an old, I know it's an old building, so I know that's a challenge. So the, and you answered my question regarding hard and soft. Thank you. I've never built a school building before, so I appreciate you spelling that out for me. I did have a question about how the escalator was calculated, because we are, you know, a lot of the macroeconomic dialogue is that a recession is coming, that our labor market might change a lot, you know, we might be seeing rising unemployment soon, so, you know, I know we've been on this crazy inflation ride, but it's possible that we are going to start turning that corner soon, so have we, have you factored that in at all? I'd like to speak on that a little bit.
I have not, and we are every day active in this industry, and we are seeing- And, um, we are, um, every day active in this industry, and we are, um, seeing, other school divisions, as well as other local government, uh, uh, not seeing that type of falloff, unlike what occurred in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, when construction costs went the opposite direction, and it was a rapid drop-off. We were thinking that that pattern may repeat itself this year, but we are not seeing it. And it's, it's, uh, it also feels different in the fact that skilled labor of trades such as electricians, mechanical technicians who install and operate mechanical systems, welders, structural steel, carpenters, all of those trades are desperately seeking, uh, experienced craftsmen, and they're competing with each other for wages. And in addition to that, in the federal pipeline, in the infrastructure world, many of the grant program-funded, uh, improvements that local governments are tapping into, as well as, uh, any, uh, federally funded grant administered programs require Davis Bacon wage scale, and those wage scales are higher than the normal open shop rate of pay. And those pressures are not going away in this region, at least for three to four years. The pipeline is already open with, with those projects. So, not knowing where your source of funding is coming from, I will just caveat this with saying, you know, if, if the City of Manassas was to receive federal grant money to apply to this project, that's great. But we would want to caution you to make sure that you understand what strings come with that money. And if the certified payrolls and Davis Bacon scales come with that, it's, comes with a cost, and it's the cost of labor. So, it, we're seeing this across the region, and, uh, that's why we're not seeing the labor dynamic reduce with, uh, job openings and employment opportunities in the construction trades right now are going unfilled, and, and the supply of skilled labor is, is significantly short. And companies are importing people from other areas where that dynamic has already happened, where things have slowed. Permits are dropping, and issuance of, of new construction is falling. But they're coming here, and they're, uh, walking into situations where they're at a much higher rate of pay.
So, this is maybe a silly question, but I don't know how these kind of contracts normally work. So, you're presenting to us today an estimate between, you know, seventy-nine and, you know, eighty-one point five million. Let's say we go ahead, we break ground, and we start, you know, building, all that good stuff. How is the final bill calculated? Do we, at some point before we break ground, sign a contract saying, "We're giving you eighty million," and do with that what you can, or is this something like, "We're going to get a bill later, oh, it turns out that we need a five hundred thousand more"? You know, I don't know how this process goes, if you wouldn't mind explaining it to me.
Yeah. It, it's likely to be a competitive procurement, in terms of, it will be competitively bid. The, you know, the first step is you would need to award a design contract, and that is part of, um, the, the soft costs. They get through that design phase, and, uh, you have, uh, permit documents ready to be issued. The project will go out for bid, just like Baldwin did, and, uh, in the case of Baldwin, I believe we pre-qualified the general contractors to make sure that they were, and those that were invited to bid had submitted credentials and pre-qualifications to make sure that they could do the job. But on bid day, when the bids come in, that's where you will be able to say, "This project cost is, is locked." And you'll know what your soft costs are, you will know what the bids are, and you will know what contingency, uh, you have to address any changes as they come up during construction, which is generally the process that, uh, was followed for, for Baldwin.
Well, I think that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Vice Chair Stevens.
Um, thank you for coming out. We appreciate the presentation and the breakdown. So, to make sure that I have this all in correctly in my mind, to build Baldwin by a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand square feet is going to be seventy-nine to eighty-one. To pare it down to the current, is it the current size of the current Baldwin? Or to fit this size that brings it down to between seventy-two and seventy-six?
That would be to bring it down to the current program of Baldwin, as it exists.
So, it would base, is it, if it was like a mirror image of Baldwin?
Yes.
Okay. And then today, if we were building today seventy-two, but if it's on the timeline that your proposal is on, it would be more like seventy-six?
Seventy-six.
Okay.
Would be the approximate number.
Okay, and then to the non-construction brain that I have, that, those numbers include everything except demolition of this building?
That's correct.
Okay. So, there would not be, this, this has built into it any potential extra costs that could come along the way?
It also has a, uh, owner contingency built in to that, in the soft costs.
Okay.
At approximately five percent.
Okay.
So, it's, uh, the, the breakdown of the soft costs, I, I didn't provide that. It's, um, roughly, um, design fees, the, the furniture fixtures and equipment, the IT, the communication systems, the security systems with the cameras, everything, all in, uh, equates to approximately, uh, twenty percent.
Okay.
Uh, and then the additional five percent that we're carrying is specifically the owner contingency.
Okay. And so, the, the bid you gave us, that includes the ten additional classrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the cost estimate that we prepared includes the additional ten, uh, classrooms, which is approximately a, a ten thousand square foot difference.
Okay. Okay. This gives us a lot to think about, gives us a lot to talk about. So, we appreciate you coming out and giving us this information. And then, a very rough estimate for renovation of this building would be about seventy-five million. So.
That's right.
Just about?
That would include some additions to, to bring program parity.
Okay.
Because you're limited in size here to approximately ninety thousand square feet.
Okay, so that would be adding?
Adding and renovating.
Okay.
And replacing all of the major systems.
Now, would that seventy-five million include, because when you're renovating, you have to have somewhere for your students and your classes to be during renovation.
Right.
Does that include those costs?
Yes, and, and it, it, you're, you're absolutely correct. It, uh, phased, uh, sequential renovations and construction is disruptive. It stretches out the time. We did, uh, consider that with the additional premium of what that would look like, both with time and then contingency as well.
Right.
With a renovation program, we recommend a higher percentage than five percent. And we typically would recommend a minimum of ten.
Okay.
And so, uh, the soft cost number is higher in the renovation scenario than, as a percentage, than the new.
Okay, so, and if it was a reno, renovation, it would take longer, because you have to do it in phases, and you have to continuously rotate who is where as you renovate, as you go through each phase?
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
It, it is longer. It's, um, to give you a sense, um, to construct the new school, we see it as a, uh, a two-year duration. That's a comfortable schedule. The existing Baldwin was constructed in less than eighteen months, and it was not a comfortable construction schedule. But, um, so, um, renovations in a phased approach with sequential work areas and zones, with keeping mechanical systems and electrical systems functioning, adds a lot of cost, and it adds time. So, uh, we see a potential of that, you know, what could be done in eighteen months in a new build, that would likely stretch out to be a three-year-plus project to renovate in a phased approach here.
Okay. Okay. I think for this exact moment, that's all the questions I have, but I'm sure by the time I get home tonight, I'll have about thirty more, but, so, thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and Ms. Williams had a question.
Thank you, thank you. Actually, you've, you've answered a lot of the questions. I did have, can we go back to remodeling current Jenny Dean? We currently have ninety square feet here, and you talked about adding a little bit, and then you mentioned adding enough to kind of equate to, to Baldwin? Is that what I understood, or did I understand that incorrectly? About how much above and beyond ninety square feet?
Ninety thousand.
I mean, I'm sorry, ninety thousand square feet?
Yeah.
Not up to a hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, correct?
No, ma'am. And, and this was, um, again, it was, um, order of magnitude. Adding forty thousand square feet to this facility would, would bring you close to parity with Baldwin in terms of space program. But not, it wouldn't get you all the way there, but it would get you most of the way there.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, so, we, we, roughly, we modeled, uh, approximately a forty thousand square foot addition to this facility in that seventy-six million dollar figure.
Okay, and I appreciate you sharing us, um, what you had discovered today and one of the periodicals you read about what the anticipated cost really will be as far as inflation, because we are in this, we don't know what's going to happen, so I appreciate that, that gives us to-date, uh, information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Downey.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming out tonight, and thank you for, um, fulfilling our request. You've given us a lot to think about. Next up on our discussion agenda, we moved, um, we intended to take action on recommendations from the Educational Support Committee, but we have moved that back to discussion agenda. And I'll go to Ms. Spall to discuss your recommendations, and perhaps going further.
Okay. This is a little bit of uncharted territory for me, but, um, I believe what we just heard, just so we can all be on the same page, is this the time that I can say these things? You don't know what I'm going to say, but. You know, it pains me greatly to move this agenda item back tonight. It pains me greatly, I won't say that twice. But I think that we've clarified a couple points. One is that this is a twenty-four-month build, so anybody who's talking about eighteen months is probably not being accurate, and I'm not naming any, I mean, there's no specific person, but I want to make sure we're all on the same talking points. We cannot vote on the action item that I had hoped to vote on this evening primarily, because we do not have more than sixty-two million dollars to work with right now. And that is the main stopping point, and we, I believe, have got to go back to the drawing board, you know, to address that reality. And to their credit, you know, in some instances, I think that this is something that council, we all knew was, was going to come to a head at some point, and I would like to say, you know, my recommendation is that we say the buck stops here. You know, this is the night that we all realize what we're dealing with. Um, I'm encouraged personally to hear that a same-like model, eh, that we have with Baldwin is not seventy-nine or eighty-one million. You know, we have some wiggle room, I think, with a, a much more palatable number, um, in my mind, in seventy-four to seventy-six. So, I don't know exactly what I'm supposed to do in this discussion right now, but I would like to say that, you know, I think, I would like to formally call for some kind of a task force that says, "What do we really need? When can we really deliver it?" And in my mind, that means that we need to have, you know, if it was all up to me, I would only mention the number, hundred-and-forty thousand square foot going forward. I would only mention the number seventy-four million going forward. I would only discuss starting, um, at an accelerated start date going forward. Those would be non-negotiables from me, a person, not the executive, the educational committee, and not from school board, but that's, that's what I'd like to see happen. I don't know how we make all those things happen. But I think a task force is a good start, uh, because we do need our taxing body, to say yes to a lot of things. I mean, we don't know for sure that eighty million is a deal breaker with them. So, I will, I guess, close by saying, we definitely have heard, in no uncertain circumstances tonight, that costs are not going to go down. I do believe now is the time to act. You know, we have the mark of a healthy, I understand that a recession could be coming. But by all measures right now, today, we have a vibrant city, we have, um, house values rising, there are a lot of indicators that, that, that tell us that things are going the right way for our city. And our citizens want our schools to be performing to the best of their ability. I don't even want to use the word "better," but I want to say that, you know, this is a priority, and I think that we need to figure out how to make it happen. And I wish that we were voting on it as an action item today, but I don't have the money. We don't have the money to make what Mr. Downey just said happen.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
I have a few thoughts. First, I appreciate the way this board took a step back when, when, when everything was so volatile, we weren't quite sure how much this was going to impact us. We, instead of paying for an estimate a year ago, two years ago, and then sit here again and pay for it again, so I appreciate that we've done that. I think we all anticipated that these numbers could be higher than, than what we, we thought. I believe we need to take, take a step back and perhaps think, think of some other avenues for solutions, perhaps. And again, I'm not, I'm not in construction either, and, um, but I'm visualizing maybe if we, if we could build new, because every time we've looked at, at remodeling old and building new, building new was always the more fiscal responsible thing to do. Perhaps, and my, perhaps we could talk about starting like Phase One, and it cost, I'm just, I'm just making, you know, making numbers up at this point, sixty-two million dollars, but then have a plan for another ten years later, maybe being able to add on. Just trying to think, think out, think that way.
That sounds like the kind of thinking we need on the task force.
So, that, so, the task force is exactly what we'll need to do. And then bringing in a finance, we need to talk about finances as well. I know with the light of banks failing right now due to bonds going crazy, perhaps, I, I think we need to pull in financing as well and have a conversation with somebody with that, that skill set.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Brooks, would you have something to say?
I, I just wanted, like, remind us all that he did say that, and let me, I didn't ask. So, maybe to clarify, the sooner we start, that eighty million goes down as well, correct? I believe that's what I heard you say. So, the sooner we start, the lower the number gets, even from the numbers that Ms. Spall said. So, that's a, that's a big sticking point, that the sooner we get started, the sooner, the, the lower the number's going to be.
Start sooner, scale down. Got it. Good point, Mrs. Brooks. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Also, if not now, when?
Yeah.
I mean, we really need to make this happen.
Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. Once upon a time, and I know that a few members of school board and of city council remember, there was a period in time where we didn't think we would build a new Jenny Dean at all. In fact, I remember many years ago, sitting at a meeting, a joint meeting, where it was said, a new Jenny Dean will not be built. This is something we have to do. We have to do it for our students, we have to do it for our city. We, we need a new Jenny Dean. But I agree with Ms. Spall that we need to get moving on it. We need to make a decision, we need to move forward. And kind of a funny story, Ms. Spall once said, "We never have any educational support committee meetings. We need to have an educational support committee meeting." And now it's a very different world. So, but this is, yeah, definitely something we need to have a task force, but we also need to move quickly. We can't kick the can down the road. We've got to get this done. Our kids need it, our city needs it, so.
So tonight, is there anything we can do tonight that will ensure that we're moving forward on this? We can't say we're going to use the base plans till we know we have a financial plan for new dean. Grade level configuration, we can't really decide that either till we get, or can we decide the grade level configuration? We could do that. And the third thing was work with city council. We have inherited coordinating, bonding, and funding of the project, but maybe more in a general role like your task force. So can you put that into a fancy motion?
Yeah. Yeah, I had separate motions. So I, Chair?
Hang on a second. Can we take action from our discussion? Okay, we moved it to discussion. All right, never mind.
So is it possible, for the record, we'd like to go to action agenda?
Can we do that?
Next.
I'm asking the clerk if we can technically do that.
We can do it.
Dr. Newman, I'd like to give you direction to work with the city, to work on a new financial plan and coordinate with the board or a task force. Is that good for you? Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anything else? Is there any other comments or questions about the new dean project? I will move along to our action agenda, finance and operations. We have a proposed change to the budget development calendar. We are now eliminating the meeting, we would like to propose to eliminate the meeting for March 16th. It was originally set up to be a budget work session about the state budget update, which we do not have from the state yet. Additionally, the council has requested that we move our joint city council-school board meeting from April 12th to March 29th. And we have accommodated that request, and I'll just need a motion.
Chair, I move that the school board and city of Manassas approve the revised FY 2024 budget development calendar?
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, second by Vice Chair Stevens. At the school board, the city of Manassas approve the revised FY 2024 budget development calendar. Oh, hang on a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion carries 7-0. Next up is board member's comments, and I will start first with our student representatives, Mr. Beebe.
Good evening, everyone. All I have to say for this evening is good luck to everyone as we end this marking period, and good luck to everyone who is currently participating in spring sports this year as the seasons have now started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Island.
Hello, I just wanted to say that I hope everybody is supporting the sports teams this year. As Mr. Beebe just said, spring season has just started, and a lot of other sports are practicing for fall for next year. I'd also like to have a reminder that students have no school this Friday, it's a teacher work day. Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Island. Mrs. Breschah.
Yes, thank you. To change topics a little bit, I'm announcing an update to our internal protocols. Last meeting, I had asked for us to consider updating our agenda and agenda packet distribution protocols to match the city's protocol, and I'm very happy to announce that Dr. Newman, who I hope is okay, has, has made this change and has promulgated the following regulation, which went into effect yesterday. At the direction of the superintendent, the clerk of the school board shall be responsible for the publication of agendas and related materials for all noticed and scheduled meetings of the school board. Distribution of the agenda. One, materials accompanying the agenda item shall be provided to the clerk of the school board for distribution to the members of the school board and for posting with other meeting materials. Two, the superintendent shall direct the clerk of the school board to publish agendas and related materials to a prominent public location at which notices are regularly posted and in the office of the clerk of the school board at least six days prior to the meeting. The agendas and related materials for meetings held on a Tuesday will be published on the Wednesday prior to the meeting date. If key information is outstanding, the superintendent may delay the publication of the related materials to the Thursday prior to the meeting date. This regulation shall apply to regular work session and committee meetings held by the school board. I want to thank Dr. Newman and our clerk, Ms. Garza, for your quick action on this topic, and I am looking forward to a more transparent and more engaged school board era.
Thank you, Mrs. Breschah. Mrs. Spall.
I guess I just want to say that it's my personal goal, and I believe it's the goal of all of this board, to do our best to govern with vision. And as we go down this somewhat arduous path of a lot of unknowns with regard to budget, space, students, and, you know, even teacher salaries that are coming down the pike, we are never going to run out of issues that we need to give our attention to. So I just want to say that, again, these costs are never going to go down. It's time for us as leaders to lead, and that I hope that we can all work together towards some kind of resolution for this budget season that represents Manassas as it deserves.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Mrs. Williams.
In light of the cost of the new dean and the work we are going to have ahead of all of us, I do want to remind us all that no matter the outcome, that we on this board in this school district always keep the students top of mind, and we will continue to keep the main thing the main thing, which is educating our students. And tonight, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Hollingsworth.
Thank you, Chair Seberg. I just want to remind, there's a job fair coming up on March 25th at Osborne, and I think it's at Osborne. And also, there's substance abuse prevention on March 22nd at Osborne. I really wish and hope that we get a good turnout for the substance abuse. Last Sunday, I attended a friend of mine's funeral where he buried his son from Percocet. So I take this seriously, and I hope we can spread the word and get people to turn out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Brooks is up next, but she asked to have her comments waived this evening. She is, she's had a death in the family recently, and she's holding it together, and she's doing a great job. Thank you, Mrs. Brooks, for being here. I know that it's very important for you to, you know, be here as a school board member. We're glad you're here, and you can save your comments for next time. Vice Chair Stevens.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to the Chair of our Educational Support Committee. You have done a lot of work behind the scenes and shoulder a lot of responsibility in this, so thank you for all the hard work you've done and the work you're doing moving forward. And I wanted to talk on what school board member Hollingsworth was talking about. A few weeks ago, several of us attended a panel discussion on how schools respond teens and substance abuse, which is a conversation among many school divisions. We were not participants, we attended. Chair Seberg, school board member Spall, and Dr. Thomas and I all attended the Zoom meeting, and we really heard a lot from the other school divisions around us on how they're addressing substance abuse in their divisions. And it gives us a lot to talk about it, how we're addressing substance abuse in our school division. The E3 series that Mr. Hollingsworth talked about is on the 22nd at 5:30, Osborne High School. They will be serving Chick-fil-A, which is always a fun thing, but it's a really informative, the E3 series are wonderfully informative. I wish they'd been around when my oldest kids were younger. There's so much I didn't know then that I wish I did, that I know now. While we never want to think anything's going to ever happen to our kids, we have to be prepared. So please plan on coming to the substance abuse awareness E-series training on the 22nd. And today, several of us, Ms. Breschah, Ms. Spall, Chair Seberg and I, oh, and school board member Williams, sorry, I knew there was another person. We all attended Revive Training at Osborne High School, which was about learning how to use naloxone in the instance where there's a potential overdose. And one of the presenters said something really important that stuck with me. Revive Training, overdose training, training to use naloxone, which is the brand name, is kind of like learning how to use CPR. You're probably never going to need it, but you want to know that you can do it if the worst thing happens. And I've been CPR trained for 20, 30 years, and I've never used it, but I'll always be CPR trained because it's the difference between a life. So it's very important, and talking to what Mr. Hollingsworth talked about, my former sister-in-law passed away just before Christmas from overdose. She left behind a 16-year-old son who had to go to his mom's funeral. This was someone who had a PhD. You know, addiction isn't something that happens to one specific population of people, it can happen to anyone. And unfortunately, with some of the things that are out there, on the street, on the market, it can take one pill, and that's all. You could have a kid who tries something one time, and that's all. And to me, that's what matters so much. So, you know, I think we all care very much, and we care about our students. So if you can, and if you hear about a Revive Training, it's free training, it takes maybe a half an hour, 45 minutes, but it's worth it, and it's just like being CPR certified. If you've got it, you may need it, you may never use it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just want to thank everyone that's been in attendance for tonight's meeting. Thank you for staying informed. Thank you for being engaged in our process and in school board business. Tonight, we got what some might say bad news, bad news, good news, but it really was information. It's not what we expected, but now we can move forward. Now we can consider it, rework the group, get this task force in place, and move ahead. And we'll continue to work with city council to make things happen. So thanks, everyone, for being here. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Chair, I move that the school board and the city of Manassas meeting adjourned.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mr. Hollingsworth, that the school board meeting adjourned. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting has adjourned. Thank you.